Hello and welcome to another in a series of debates between candidates for seats on Greenville City Council. I am Lisa Ellison, co-founder and editor of the Greenville Guardian at greenvillaguardian.org. We are a nonprofit, independent, online newspaper supported entirely by reader donations, and it is our readers generous support of public discourse in addressing local issues that has made the staging of these debates possible. In a moment, I'll review the format and ground rules for today's debate, but first, let's meet our questioners and the candidates. Our first questioner is Ryan Clancy, editor-in-chief of the East Carolinian, the independent media organization serving the East Carolina University community. In that role, Ryan oversees a staff of 50 and maintains responsibility for the printed paper, its website, and a video news show. Now in his senior year, Ryan was admitted to the ECU Honors College, a pre-professional study program which gives top students a wide range of traditional and non-traditional learning experiences. We are honored to have him as a questioner of today's candidates. Welcome, Ryan. Our second questioner is Don Cavallini. Though Don's accent will immediately disabuse you of any notion that he is a Greenville native, he has lived here for 30 years and is a graduate of the Master's Program in Rehabilitation Counseling at East Carolina University. A tireless activist, he is co-chair of the Pitt County Coalition Against Racism and is serving his first term as a member of the Greenville Housing Authority, a city-run commission charged with promoting safe, sanitary public housing in Greenville. Welcome, Don.
Thank you.
Now, let's meet our candidates. But before we do, please note that both are challenging two-term incumbent Alan Thomas, who is not here. Though we extended numerous invitations to the mayor to participate in this debate, he declined. Donna Whitley is a lifelong resident of Greenville, who has worked as a real estate investor, a dance instructor, and served as Elmhurst PTA president. Whitley founded one of the city's first neighborhood associations, has authored a book on personal finance, is a founding member of Pitt County Women for Women, a grant-making organization focused on empowering women and girls to achieve their full potential. She has been active in local politics since shortly after graduating from high school. Challenger Ernest Reeves is seeking public office in Greenville for the first time after an unsuccessful bid for U.S. Senate in 2014. A retired captain in the U.S. Army who served at the Pentagon, Reeves is a Greenville native. He graduated magna cum laude with a BA in Communications from St. Augustine's College in Raleigh, and is also a graduate of the Army's Personnel and Administration School. A Combat Zone veteran, Reeves served all over the world during his 20-year military career. Before we begin, a bit about what it means to be mayor of Greenville. In addition to presiding over city council meetings, Greenville's mayor breaks any tie vote on matters before the body. The mayor may also participate in debate and give his or her point of view. While it is easy to characterize the mayor's somewhat limited role on city council as more functional than leadership-oriented, there is a prestige and responsibility that comes with the title of mayor that is difficult to ignore. As the face of the city, Greenville's mayor represents us at statewide and national conferences, trainings, and other events, and is free to use his or her bully pulpit to advocate for council action on issues he or she feels are critical to the city's present and future. Why would the candidates before you want to be mayor? Our goal today is to find out. Our debate will be conducted in a minimum of six rounds, each of which will begin when a new question is posed. Our two questioners will alternate with the East Carolinians' Ryan Clancy posing the first question to begin round one. Questions must be answerable by both candidates. We are concerned with the issues related to governing those who live, work, and play in Greenville. Questions pertaining to only one candidate's experience, behavior, or personal life are not on the table. I will intervene if I believe either candidate is making things personal in any way. After a question has been posed, the first respondent will have three minutes to answer. The other candidate then gets three minutes as well. Then it's back to the first respondent for a 90-second rebuttal, and finally, back to their opponent for a 90-second rebuttal. The round is then over, and a new round begins with a new question from the other questioner. The candidate responding first in each round will alternate, just as the questioners do. As determined by a coin flip a few minutes ago, Donna Whitley will respond first in round one. I will keep time for the responses and rebuttals and give a sign indicating they have 30 seconds remaining. I will also cut candidates off if they exceed their allotted time. We have allotted roughly 55 minutes for questions and answers, and we'll take a 10-minute break midway through. I will also time that. Though we will have a minimum of six rounds, we will add rounds if time permits, and we'll wrap up the question portion of the debate after roughly 55 minutes. We will then move to closing statements with both candidates having three minutes in the order determined by a coin flip. Questioners and candidates, are we clear on everything?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Let's stay focused on the issues, and good luck to both of you. Donna Whitley answers first, and Ryan Clancy will ask the question.
All right. So, the first question, it's really straightforward, is, I guess, what makes you qualified to be the mayor of Greenville?
I was born here and I was raised here. I have raised my children. My husband's a retired firefighter. They are graduates of the public school system and East Carolina University. I have deep, deep roots here, and I love the city very much. There are no specific requirements for mayor. However, there are values and experiences that a mayor needs in order to lead the city. I come to you as a person who has worked for years with many people in our community of diverse backgrounds and different opinions on projects to make the city a better place to live. We have worked together on the Public Transportation Commission to get the great buses up and running. We have worked on Higgs Neighborhood, where I lived for 10 years, to get unpaved streets paved. We work together in PTA, not just for the budget for education, but to get the sidewalk ordinance passed so children would have a safe way to go and play and visit their friends. I have enjoyed bringing people together around a table on different issues and working to bring people to move the city forward. I also have experience in the political process in Raleigh and Washington, D.C. I worked in the summers during college with Senator Sam J. Irvin, Jr. I was paid staff for Senator Ed Warren in Raleigh and was accustomed to lobbying, going to Raleigh to lobby. I'm very aware of the committee in Washington and how you have to maneuver those when you need to get something. I was appointed by Senator Mark Bassnight on the North Carolina Nursing Board, the only non-medical person to represent the voice of the people of North Carolina. So, I have experience in the corridors of power. I also am a person who likes and enjoys bringing people together, always in a spirit of cooperation, goodwill, and respect. And I think it's very important for the mayor to always speak respectfully to the citizens, to the staff, and to the other members of the council. That is why I am fully qualified to be mayor.
Ernest, three minutes.
Yes. I'm from Greenville, North Carolina, and I love this city deeply. When I grew up, my father worked for East Carolina University, but he left to start his own business, a grass-cutting business. And he was fortunate enough to work for some great doctors here. One of those doctors's name was John P. East. Dr. East ended up being United States Senator, and he still kept a great relationship with my father. And I can remember cutting Dr. East's yard on Saturdays, as well as BB and T that's right across from Adam's Car Wash now. Every Saturday, my brother would, I would go over there and cut, and my dad, you know, he loved the city, even though he was a Democrat, Senator East was a Republican. And so, I decided to enter the military because my brother, my two brothers before me had done it. I had a brother that went in Vietnam War, and my other brother was in the military. And me being the 12th child from right here in Greenville, my mom and dad had 12 kids by the same parents, nine girls, three boys, I'm the baby of the family. And of course, I had a very bad speech impediment, but I knew I wanted to do something. And so, I was in high school at J.A. Rose, and I saw the recruiter, and my brother was in the Army. So, I decided to take the test. And he said, "But you know, I can give you two years in the Army, and we're gonna give you this money for education because you tested real high." So, at that time, Dr. Stephen White's son was in school with me, and him and Dr. Monroe, they went to Senator East and asked him could he help me try to go to West Point. And so, Senator East called me over, and I got a call from DC. I went over and met the senator. Of course, I knew him already, you know? And so, he told me about the process of becoming an officer. So, we agreed that I would go into the Army and that he would help me if I needed help, you know, late on. So, he gave me a letter. I went in the military as a Personnel Administration Specialist, and then life just changed. They signed me to career. My very first unit was a finance unit that had a bank. The Army has very few banks, but I was a unit administrator, and I learned a lot about money and balance sheets and how money works. But I always wanted to go to school, so me having a very bad speech impediment, I started going to college. And one of my doctors said, "Why don't you consider becoming an officer?" So, as my career progressed, I ended up in the first six years of my career living in two different countries and going to school all the time at night. And so, finally, I ran across a person that really took interest in me, and they said, "You're really good in math. Why don't you try to go to school for Green and Gold Scholarship?" So, I went from Korea to the borders of Mexico, to Stuttgart, Germany, and then out of the blue, they gave me a nominated assignment to C-TAC and the National. I ended up applying for a scholarship, went back to school, became a Signal Corps officer, and I ended my career working at the Pentagon, assigned to the White House, and being a personal aide for Ambassador Brimmer. And so, I've worked throughout the government in a lot of positions, and being a commanding officer on foreign territory, I feel is on qualified to be the mayor of Greenville, North Carolina.
You have 90 seconds for further comments you'd like to make?
I think I would like to add that it's important to acknowledge that women also have skills in finance because they have run their households. And balancing a budget in a household, plus I have a small real estate investment business, and managing your property, the bottom line is the same. You have to spend less than you earn, and you have to save for maintenance and emergencies. And so, you have a skill there that also makes me capable. Every woman in this room understands that.
Further comments?
And I also would like to add, when I left the military, I was recruited by United Airlines in management, and I ended up being the supervisor of airport operations for not only Chicago Air International, but I did my rotational training in the San Francisco International Airport and also in Denver International Airport, where I, on a daily basis, sometime, depending on the type of aircraft, I managed nearly a billion dollars of aircraft. It was somewhere between $700 million and a billion dollars worth of aircraft and management, you know, tools in terms of equipment and fuel and stuff of that nature. And I also spent nine years in the military as an enlisted man before I became a military officer. And so, and I do appreciate what women do too as well, growing up with nine sisters and my mom, obviously, well, eight sisters, one of my sisters passed, but, so I do appreciate the achievements of women and what they do.
On to round two. Ernest Reeves will answer first, and Don Cavallini will ask the question.
Hi.
Hi.
How you doing?
The campaign is early, but both before and during the campaign, a lot of lip service is given to the terms accountability and transparency when it comes to public service. It seems that these requirements are interpreted quite differently by the sitting members of the Greenville City Council. Depending upon the issues, some members have described their constituents' request for council intervention as a request for them to micromanage. What is transparent is the sitting council member-at-large did not consider his intense inquiry into the Pitt Greenville Airport micromanaging. What is your responsibility in assuring that Greenville city administrators act in the public interest? And how would you address constituents and their appeals to make those administrators do just that?
I am considered by most, I'm a Democrat, but most people think I'm a Republican because I believe in fiscal accountability for everything. And I worked for total Republican administration at the Pentagon, and so, I had all civilian bosses. And I believe, and I believe in open government, so I believe that the people, they, you know, you all are the boss. And so, when you elect an official, especially like when you're talking about Pitt Airport, okay, I have a lot of experience in the airlines industry, as I just told you. I worked in management with United Airlines. I believe that if there is any committee, then you have a right to see whatever that they do. Now, there's some things that the city council is gonna do behind closed doors, and you don't want to let the public know about it, and rightfully so. You can't do that. Sometimes you have to wait until you can release the information. But barring something that can be released, or if you have a right, I mean, you should have a right to know it, you could address the city council and the mayor anytime. If you elect me as mayor, everybody knows me. I'm at Walmart every day. You can come up and talk to me. I'll invite you into the office. We'll call in the right people, and we'll set an appointment so you can go see them. But I believe in open government. And like I say, I'm, you know, I'm basically a conservative Democrat. In fact, I was asked by many people in the Republican Party to switch over. So, I believe in accountability for everything. I don't believe that we should get over on the citizens of Greenville, North Carolina. But on the other hand, I don't believe that the mayor should get involved with every, you know, ounce of decision-making that the city has to make. The city should be allowed and have the autonomy to make their decisions, and he, the city manager, along with the city council, they should be, the city manager should brief the city council, the mayor should be briefed, and then if there's a situation, the mayor should intervene. But I believe in open government, and you have a right to, you know, to see whatever the city has. That's what I think. And I believe that, it's just like a lot of people have a problem with GUC. Now, I'm for GUC, and they have, and I, now, and I went back and did some research on GUC. And now that I did, I understand some decisions that are made, and rightfully so. But I believe in open government. So, if you elect me as mayor, you can see, if, as long as I have anything to do with it, I would allow you to see whatever you want to see. And you can address my office anytime you want to. And I don't care if it's day or night, it doesn't matter. Anybody that knows me, even when I was on the campaign trail across the state, I received 43,000 votes, and I spent all the time that they needed me to do, especially the Libertarian Conference that Democrats don't get to. I went and spoke. I waited after that answer, every question that they had. So, that's what I'll do, sir.
Three minutes, Donna.
The city of Greenville follows a council-manager form of government, and it is most appropriate, of course, for a citizen to speak to a representative, the council member, about an issue. The way it's properly handled, since the council's job is to determine policy, and the, and your manager, your city manager, is to implement, and the staff is to implement that on a daily basis, is for then, then that concern to be given to your city manager, and then goes to the proper department, and the people who are in charge then work through that. I think that's a better way of running an organization, since that's the way we've organized it, than to get council people, confusing people by getting involved in the day-to-day conflict that may be going on. I believe that would be a much more effective way of dealing with it. And of course, it should always be transparent and open, except for personnel. I understand that has to be done behind closed doors, but I think we should also focus on making sure that our budget process is open to everybody, so that the people of the city know how their money is being spent and how it's been designated.
90 seconds?
Yes. Well, like I say, you know, everyone knows the city council process. I ran for the United States Senate. I know the process very, very well. But what the problem is here in Greenville, North Carolina, is, is that the citizens don't feel like they have a voice. That's what the issue is. I hear it from everyone. I mean, people walk up to me and say, you know, "I can't get a straight answer," or, "I can't get anything done about my drain," or, you know, "They stealing money for us," or, "They shouldn't be on this board, they shouldn't be on that board." But they have, the people have no redress. Now, you may have one or two city council members that, you know, you can call, and yeah, you know, they not worried about whether or not they get reelected. But there's a lot of other ones right now, I'm gonna tell you. So, what we have right now is, no disrespect intended to anybody running, we have people on the city council that don't like the mayor, and the mayor don't care for the city council. He's not even here today, which is a travesty. We are debating in his house, per se, and he's not here. Now, I don't know the whole story of it, but the mayor should be here doing this debate with Ms. Whitley and I, because we are in the people's house, which is his house. So, so we have a lot of, you know, things going on here that's under the surface, and so, we need a clean house, and let's start afresh. Let's give the people their house back. If you elect me, you will be able to come to my office and address, if you had a concern, we'll get with the right committee, and we'll set up something for you to address. You could address to the city council, too. Call the city clerk, make an appointment, you will be able to address it. I make that promise to the people. Now, like I said before.
Time.
We have to. Time, sorry.
Thank you. Donna, 90 seconds?
I think it's very important for people, citizens of Greenville, to feel that they're being listened to. That's a fundamental, I think, right when you live in a democracy, that your representatives genuinely are listening to you. And I would do everything I can to create a better atmosphere of that. And I thank you for that question.
Donna will answer first, and Ryan Clancy will ask the question.
All right. My question is really about, I guess, sorry, we don't have a mic here, roads and as far as traffic safety goes. There's certain areas of Greenville that really have a lot of trouble with increasing population, traffic gets really bad, they're dangerous. Some 10th Street's what comes to mind. Well, I know that 10th Street is a state road as opposed to a, you know, Greenville Road's a state road, but I still wonder is what you, as mayor, would do to fix that problem and to, I guess, overcome the obstacle that it is a state road but still has a lot that really needs to be taken care of to make it a safer road?
What road did you say?
10th Street.
Ah, yes, 10th Street. Okay. I want you to know that when I started, co-founded the Higgs Neighborhood Association, talking about roads, that within the city limits of Greenville, there were blocks and blocks of unpaved roads. And that was one of the first things that we worked on, was to get those streets paved. So, I'm very well aware that Greenville has been behind the curveball for a long time about taking care of the roads. I also want to share with you that Greenville is considered one of the most unsafe cities in North Carolina. Don Edwards told me that there were 5,000 accidents and 1,600 people sent to the hospital last year. So, there's definitely a need for us to deal with this. The 10th Street Connector is a very exciting project that's going to create a lot of economic development, and how it's designed is going to create a lot of quality of life. One of the issues that things have been, people are starting to talk about is doing a series of bonds in which we would then be able to play catch-up and then stay on top of the maintenance. I'm a great believer that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure.
Well, like I say, the projects that, if the bond goes through, we'll be able to address some of the concerns you have. But I didn't know that 10th Street, all of 10th Street was a state supporter road. I know out in 33, but I thought that part of it, you know, you may correct me if I'm wrong, but, but I thought part of that road is also, is all of it is considered state. So, if all of it's considered state, then that means that, like I say, you know, we have to make sure that those roads are done. But the way I understood, because when I read the 10th Street Connector, the reason why we was gonna be able to, you know, provide the money that the bond is because of, you know, the SS money that we supposed to do. But like I say, I know that, you know, we will be able to address those concerns, but you are right, 10th Street does need to be repaired, but so does the west side of Greenville, and so does Arlington Boulevard, and so does 5th Street. And so, like I say, you know, but I do believe that because, now, I'm a proponent of student, you know what I'm saying? I mean, like I say, I was a college recruiter in college, and I love, you know, students. We have to protect the students, and 10th Street is, you know, is a vibrant runway for students, so we have to make sure that you all are protected, along with the other areas like Arlington. For me, I think the two priorities for the money that we receive should be 10th Street and Arlington. In fact, Arlington crosses every major street in Greenville outside of 10th Street, Charles, and so, 10th Street, Charles, and everything does not, I mean, yeah, it crosses. So, I was just looking at that because I was going through the budget that we had, I mean, the bond, and so, like I said, we need to take care of 10th Street and definitely Arlington Street. Before, even though, you know, I grew up on the west side, and a lot of people want a lot of things done over there, if I had to, you know, make a prioritized decision, I would look at Arlington and 10th. I think we'll, you know, get more bang for our buck, making sure those roads are done first.
In your rebuttals, you might mention pedestrian safety. 90 seconds?
My emphasis would be, one, on us lobbying the state, the DOT, to do a better job of so many streets in our city that are actually owned by the state. And I think the idea of focusing on an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And of course, that is my whole reason I'm running, is that economic development and quality of life go hand in hand, and certainly an important aspect of that is having pedestrian paths so that you can cross the street without fear of getting killed.
Well, I happen to be at UNC four or five times a couple of months ago, and of course, they have the overpaths that go over their roads, and I know some people have talked about that. I am in favor of, you know, overpaths, particularly down, you know, in 10th Street. And I even think one should go across 5th Street because you have the nursing school there and a lot of apartments over there, and the VA. And so, and as the VA try to get more closer to the hospital, people are gonna be crossing the street. So, I would look at, you know, for, as far as future planning, having one there, making it now, when some of these greenways come, and you know, you are gonna have some bypass and walking path, which I think are great. And I moved here back from the village of Schaumburg, and as I told somebody the other night, they have like the 10th largest mall. It's a very, one of the safest and best communities in the United States. It's very nice, and you have walking trails and everything, and people are safe because you have the pedestrian, you know, crosswalks and stuff like that. And so, we need more of that here. And like I say, if you'll let me mayor, I'm open to sitting down with the students and with the newspaper at ECU, anytime, you know, you can get on my calendar. I'm willing to bring forth to the city council any proposal that's gonna have the safety of the people, especially the students.
We'll take one more round before we go to a 10-minute break. Ernest Reeves will answer first, and Don Cavallini will ask the question.
I must admit that I toiled mightily over the wording of this question, and I am pleased that there are two very bright, articulate candidates, because I know you'll figure it out.
You're very kind. You're very kind with your words.
Okay. I'm trying to make it as, my, my, my challenge was to make it as short, and now I've already made it long, right? There are institutionalized imbalances in the power, in power, in the city of Greenville and elsewhere in America. These mechanisms provide unearned privileges, and I emphasize unearned privileges, to the dominant group, and unfair barriers and disadvantages to the subordinate groups. The consequences of these imbalances are economic, social, and political, and they're deficits to these subordinate groups. So, what would you do? So, what would you do, elected or not, to deal with these imbalances?
I'm glad you asked. I entered the army as a private, and I was one of those subordinate groups. And they had the officers here. And everywhere, if you go to any military base, or if you go to work, you know, in Congress, anything, you see the lower enlisted, and you see the officers, just like in the communities here. You know, so politicians and certain groups of people, they have more perks, as they were saying. And so, I used to tell everybody, I said, "Look, there's something wrong with this picture." But when I tried to convert over, it was so much red tape. In fact, it took me nine years to go to school at night, to graduate, try to outdo everybody else after I got off work, just to even apply to try to get, to go to officer's school or get the scholarship. Then, once I got it, then you have to go through so many other tests just in order to get to the other side. Then, you have to go through the training of it to get to the other side. So, what happens with this type of system, just like this type of system here, is that you have different classes of people. And the people are saying, "Wait a minute, we pay the taxes, we're the people, but yet, they may build things over here." Like, I'm gonna tell you what I hear from West Greenville. West Greenville says, "Okay, we're part of West Greenville. The city of Greenville right now has between 26 and 30% poverty rate." The people in West Greenville, they don't really care if you build greenways. They don't really care if you fix the street that, I mean, not all, I'm not generalizing, I'm just saying. These people say, "Well, what about us?" I mean, hey, you go down there and spend 1.9 million dollars, you put up a street state, and you do something to upside gyms, so what? We got roads that need to be fixed, poverty is almost 30%, crime, look, we gave $23 million of taxpayer money to the Greenville Police, and I love the police. I used to be a unit administrator for 1/10th MP Company in Stuttgart, Germany. I was a personnel guy, love them. My, my military science professor in college was an MP. My sister died, she spent over 20 years as a law enforcement officer. But, we gave $23 million to them, we have a seven on the scale, 1 to 100, as crime in that score. Ferguson has a four, okay? Baltimore has a four. Greensburg got a four. We have a lower score than Raleigh, Charlotte, and, not Fayetteville, though. So, that mean that, I, Winnebago has a 75. That mean they ranked fourth or fifth in this state as far as being safe. Washington, we have a 40. Because the classes of people are saying, "You spending our money, and you living better than us, and we getting mistreated." And that, and so, this, every class. And I agree, we should do something about it. If you elect me, I'll bring the inequality of, I'll do my best to try to bridge the gap. That's what I'll make a promise to.
That is a very challenging question. Jobs are, of course, so important. However, people have to be educated in order to get the kind of jobs that are coming in the 21st century. I wanted to share this with you, because this is a long-term solution, but it's something I think I would like, I think fits with what you are saying. Are you familiar with a gentleman named Jeffrey Canada? He, he has a program in New York called the Harlem Baby College. He grew up in the Bronx, got out, got an education, got a scholarship to Harvard, went back and was working with something like the Boys and Girls Club, and woke up one morning 12 years later and said, "What's happening?" It's the same old, same old. The girls are getting pregnant, the boys are going to prison. And this happened to be all Hispanic, blacks, poor whites. It was, it was an economic issue. And he called Harvard and he said, "What is it that middle-class people know that poor people don't know?" And they said, "We've been waiting for somebody to ask us." And it's basically, they read to their children that by the time a child is three years old in a middle-class family, they've heard 200,000 words, and they're mainly positive. And in a poor family, again, it doesn't matter about ethnic group, it's 80,000 words and basically negative. So, he got Ford Foundation and Carnegie and all these groups to pull, and they started with one block, and then they expanded. And they got women who were pregnant. And they started teaching them how to parent, teaching them how to read to their children. And eight years later, when these kids took the New York test in the third grade, that, these kids who'd been in the 30 and 40 percentile were knocking it out of the park, 80, 90%. And then, you have a foundation, all the skills that you need for getting a job, you now have where you can build on. So, I know that's, that's something that we could be leaders in. That's not exactly the, we don't have any money for that with the city or any responsibility. But it is a vision that I have, and I thought that it fit with what you were trying to, to get. How are we going to break the cycle of poverty? And that is certainly a very good idea. I would love to partner with foundations in North Carolina, private government entities, to start something like that. So, although ultimately, it is job, in the modern-day world, people are gonna have to be educated to have a good job. And so, we do need to focus on, how can the city get involved in partnerships in advancing that?
Ninety seconds?
On my website, ernestreves.com, I'm the only candidate running for mayor. My four things, crime, poverty, inequality between, bridging the gap between the rich and the poor, and education. I, listen, I'm, I, I used to command Flint, Michigan. Crime was rampant. If you lower the crime and you lower the poverty, people feel like they are part of the city, they paying their taxes, and, and the city will get better. But let me tell you something. Right now, we got all this economic development going on in Greenville. But you look across the river, yeah, you got the airport over there, you got McDonald's, you got Walmart coming, but I don't see KFC, I don't see a bank, I don't see a post office, because you know why? This is what the people telling me. They said, "'Cause we black and we live over here." West Greenville says the same thing. You have M Street, look, I used to work for the U.S. Conservation Corps here in Greenville when I was a kid. That M Street Park is great, love M Street. I cleaned it out, used to, when I worked for Mr. Goode. But you go down to West Greenville, yeah, you got a gym down there, I remember when it burnt down. But what, what does the people, what do the people in West Greenville have to look forward to? The 45-block revitalization, they did some things, but they left it incomplete. So, this is the difference class. I'm the only candidate, you look on my website, crime, poverty, inequality, and education. If you vote for me, I'll bring it to the table. I don't know if the city council's gonna give me a go-ahead to go, but I do everything I can to try to make it work.
Ninety seconds, Donna?
I, I definitely believe in all the things Mr. Reeves is saying. And it's, it's a little bit tricky how as a city council member to get the education component in there. But we can certainly work on bringing crime, dealing with crime, through our programs that we're doing already and making better with the police department and their relationship with the police athletic league, and also bringing more neighborhood, community, uh, police watching and neighborhood watch, so that neighbors can protect and take care of each other.
Quick comment?
Yes, so, we talking about education. Okay, the state budget is 21 billion, that's not the real budget. They get like 16 billion dollars from the federal government for the purpose, and one of those purposes is to help out with public education. And a lot of federal money is running around all these states, just like Governor McCurry. He getting 16, about 16.2, 2 billion dollars to help out. So, when we talking about classes of people, we need to go to them and tell them to give us our money. There's money. It's just the rich folk, the other folks are getting money, poor people, they are not.
Any final comments that you want to? Okay, uh, this brings us to our 10-minute break. Thank you both for your ideas.
Yeah.
We'll be back in 10 minutes. Uh, there are some cards in the foyer, if you want to write down some questions.
I'm ready to go if you, if you want.
We're gonna take a break. Appreciate your enthusiasm. Cards in the foyer, we may not get to your questions, but if you have them, please write them down and hand them to our questioners. Welcome back. We're just about to begin the fifth round of the debate between the challengers for the, for the mayor's seat on Greenville City Council. Donna Whitley will answer first, and Ryan will ask the question.
All right. Question is, as mayor, assuming you elected, to what level would you support, I guess, the Greenville homeless shelter?
We've, I've supported the Greenville homeless shelter for many, many, many years. Through my church, we go and fix foods, serve food. We've made financial contributions. And I certainly think that there is a legitimate role for the city to support, since, since there are so many people who need that.
Ernest?
It's a travesty that we only have the community shelter. North of the river needs not only a community shelter, they need a shelter that is split up. They need one for women that have kids. And then, you have some older gentlemen, too, that, you know, that's like, you know, 70 years old and homeless. And you see them on the street, and you see them walking around. So, we need a new shelter across the river. It needs to be privately and supported by the city. And it needs to have a section for women and kids, or women can use it. And then, they need one for, you know, for the masses of people. And then, maybe a five or six beds over for older people, because sometimes they get robbed and abused and hurt when they go into the shelter. And in addition to that shelter, I would support feeding the masses of the people that need help for at least three days a week. Now, we're not talking about, uh, you know, have them come every day. But, they would have to do one requirement that may be offensive to some. I'm not trying to go against their 4th or 14th or 1st Amendment rights, but they would have to go into a database, they would have to do a fingerprint, and they would have to get an ID card with some type of computerized data on the back we can scan. As a former communication officer, retired signal corps officer, that I did high-tech in the military. And it's no use of us giving them something, but we don't have accountability. We must account for the money that we spend, but we, they need help. This city, they did an article in July. It was done by USA Today and Cal Berkeley and Wall Street Journal. They said Greenville, North Carolina is ranked number nine in the country. There's 20,000 municipalities in this country, number nine between income inequality. That mean there's only eight other cities in the whole United States where the richer are richer than the poor than it is here. So, what it means is, with almost, between 26 and 30% poverty rate, and then you have, wait, we talking only eight cities in the United States. And then, there was another article that just hurt me. It said that, in July 2013, I went back and read it. They said that, the article said, "The poor in Greenville will never get rich." And the reason being that they quoted is, is that Greenville has about 40 to 43% single female having babies, in most cases, more than one. So, on my website, I said that we need to have a Greenville Skills Academy for people that need help. They would be like cadets, eight weeks, we would give them a stifle, help them, put them back to work, and come up with some private partnership job. But we need a new shelter, we should have it immediately.
As we go into the rebuttals for this round, if you would consider, please, some issues about solving Greenville's homeless problem.
Okay, this is an example where jobs are so important. And I'm running because economic development and quality of life issues go hand in hand. You cannot separate them. Having a job so you can take care of your family is the most important economic development and quality of life issue. So, how's Greenville going to get those jobs here? First, you have to have an infrastructure, and we're very, very competitive with that. But when you get to the final decision between two cities of equal infrastructure, it's the quality of life amenities that break the tie. And so, even though that doesn't seem that it fits in solving the problem of poverty, it does in the sense that it, that's what's gonna bring us more jobs. And if you have a high-quality industry with a high-paid CEO and the scientists, like cross the, with Patreon, then you have people who work on the line and in packaging and secretarial. That's within the company. And then, it spreads out into the community, retail, restaurants. Uh, and, and it makes it easier for people of all levels to get a job by attracting high-quality industry.
So, I love the Greenville Police Department, and I think they doing an outstanding job. But as I mentioned previously, they got $23 million last year, and we spent another 13 million with fire and safety, and I love those guys, too. But, if crime is gonna continue to be high, why not let's take, like, if that 37 million dollars going to public safety, why don't we give 30 million dollars to public safety and take the 7 million dollars and let's do apprenticeship program for the kids, especially the poor kids, and take some of that money and come up with a shelter, and let's help the single-parent females out here that, that they the one that bringing the poverty level down. They need help. Let's feed some of the people that need help. Look, I go to Walmart, you would be surprised when the people work a full-time job and have a WIC card. It is absolutely, it's worse than a trap. It, look, it's just wrong. Now, this city get, yeah, so many accolades around the world for Greenville. I'm one of the ones that always say how great Greenville is, and I believe that. But we can do better. We can do better than a seven on the scale, 1 to 100 in crime. We can do better than 26 to 30% poverty. We can do better than number nine in the whole United States for the inequality between the rich and the poor. We can do better than the people here not getting some type of assistance to go to school that want to go to school. Young lady says she can't afford to go to Pitt Community College. That is absolutely wrong. When we in a city that has the, one of the best two colleges in the nation. Pitt Community and East Carolina, they are some of the top schools in the nation. And I often tell my friends, I live in one of the best college cities ever. So, I believe we can do better.
In the sixth round, Ernest Reeves will answer first, and Don will ask the question.
Well, as, as we're getting closer to the sum-up, this might actually serve at, at least a preliminary purpose of summing up. And I'm gonna quote because I don't want to get any of the words wrong. "There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe, nor politic, nor popular. But we must take it because one's conscience tells us it's right." This is a quote from Martin Luther. Can each of you search your conscience and maybe even your experience and indicate what you would do at such a time?
Well, generally, and most of the time, I'll pray and ask God. I'm, I'm Christian, I believe in Jesus Christ, that's me, I'm saved, Saint the Five Field, the Holy Spirit, not perfect. You know, single, but not perfect, you know? And so, but me, when I make major decisions, I pray, I say, "Look, Father, you know, tell me what directions go." And I'll sit back and I'll think. But I have been in some situations where it wasn't popular for the decisions that I made. I used to have a recruiting company in Michigan. I would command a territory about 85 times the size of Greenville, over seven cities, between Detroit and Flint. And I was a representative for the United States Army and the area commander. Just, they gave me that title, but, um, when, you know, when you the senior officer in the, in a whole territory. And there were some situations whereas I didn't, like, I had this one recruiter, just give you one situation. So, she was out pregnant, and the station commander gave her car away and her desk away. When she came back, he would not give her the desk or the car back. Now, that's just a little situation, but for her, it was a very big situation. So, I intervened and gave her her car and the thing back. And I, and the commander got upset, but that was okay, it was my command, I'm the boss, and that was the right decision to make. I've been in other situations, well, like my first command in Japan. I've had situations where one of my Japanese employees, and, you know, I had Japanese and government employees that worked for me, you know, GS workers and my military guy. And that is the headquarters commander. There was a situation that intervened, and I had to intervene and say, "No, we gonna do it this way versus this way." Now, my Japanese secretary, they all, you know, my, my leadership style is like this. You gotta make some decisions sometime in life that is not gonna be right with the people. Like, if I was, if you let me mayor, and I could, and I did not agree with the rate reduction for GUC, I'll come out and tell you, I won't BS around, you know, you know, I'll just tell you, here's the reason why. You know, or if there's a situation where, let's say, hopefully, we don't have a, a situation here like Ferguson. But if it is, if what should want to occur, if I'm, if I am mayor, or I'm not mayor, I'll come up and tell the people, "Okay, what happened? What can we do? Let's sit back and let's, let's come together." And you gotta make some decisions in life. You gotta either make the decision, or you're gonna sit back and regret not making the decision. And I made some decisions in life all over the world. Some people said they liked it, some people said not, but I felt comfortable. If I can go to sleep at night, I think it's, it's the right decision to make. Especially when it's helping the poor, and it's helping the needy, and it helping elderly people, which is my love is toward geriatric. I like helping the old people. I like helping the old people.
Would you be so kind as to read that again?
Sure. And basically, I'm asking you to look at your life experience, but also your consciences, and, and think about this quote from Martin Luther. "There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe, nor politic, nor popular. But, we must take it because one's conscience tells us it's right."
When I returned to Greenville after going to college and getting married and traveling some, I, I felt very deeply moved to move over to Paris Avenue in West Greenville. And I purchased, my husband and I purchased a house built in nineteen fifteen, and we restored it. And after our daughter was born, what I did was I, she had a beautiful English pram, and I put her in the carriage, and I went door to door and organized this neighborhood. Now, this was the first integrated organization. I, I grew up in Greenville, right? So, we were not accustomed at that time in Greenville for African-Americans and whites to be together. I felt very moved, and it was, it was a moral issue for me. And it was also upsetting for me that this neighborhood had been so ignored. Unpaved streets, not adequate lighting, poor water lines, all these things. And it wasn't like we were working to help people get together and get to know each other and work. So, I feel like that was a very important first step for me in my city to make, to improve race relations there, and to also improve that, that housing stock. And that is part of what is now why I am running for mayor. I've done all these things with groups, working on projects to make life better in Greenville. And now, I realized that the new model for the twenty-first century is, you have to be conscious and aware of recreational and cultural activities, parks and trees, medical facilities and education for, for a diverse population. And yes, even Greenways. John Day, a commercial real estate developer, spoke in favor of Greenways at the city council recently because he's aware, it's a powerful economic force that attracts business. And the key of this is that we have to have more jobs in Greenville. And at the same time, we've got to be working about how to create a better educational system. So, for me, that is the motivation for, for my belief in working toward economic development and quality of life. And I also want to say that someone in the audience told me that they knew about Jeffrey Canada's Harlem Children's Zone, and that in Huntsville, Alabama, there, there's a group that's doing a model of that. So, I'm happy to say that it's doing well and working and producing a great success.
Ninety-second rebuttal?
And I also want to add, too, you know, when you decide to become a soldier and to go, you know, go to the Middle East or take an assignment somewhere where they say you're going, I remember when they offered me an assignment to go to recruiting duty, they nominated me. And they, they offered to send me to Boarman, which is in, Boarman is in, in what you call town, Pennsylvania, Minnesota, Ohio. And so, they had just shot up the, the whole recruiting station. And so, I had to make a decision, did I still want to go to that particular company after they had just shot it up in Youngstown, Ohio? But, like you say, with the quote, "I'm a soldier." They offered me an opportunity to go there, represent my country, they had soldiers there. So, just so happened, I, they ended up sending me to Pontiac, Michigan, where on the Detroit border rather than Boarman. But, I would have taken that assignment if necessary, but that was a decision that, you know, one would have to take. A soldier always has to make a decision. I made a lot of decisions to go places where, you know, there was controversy, and I could have came back, you know, could have died and not came back, but I made the decision because like Martin Luther would say, when you serve your country, you make that oath, you, you go where they send you go. You know, because I serve my country. And so, I, I believe in that wholeheartedly. You've got to make some decisions sometime that not necessarily, you know, you might have a family of brothers and sisters, they say, "Don't go," but you know, deep in your heart, you serve your country, you're a soldier, you've got to make those decisions. Just like in life, if you elect me as mayor, there's some decisions that'll be made, people may not like me, but if it's right for the people and it's right for the city, it's about the city, too.
Thank you.
I'll do it.
Ninety seconds, Donna?
I want to be the mayor of Greenville, and I want to be the mayor of all the people. I want this to be a town where people just love to live here and say, "Greenville is just a great city because it's a place where things just work." And that means coming to the table, all of us getting together, no matter how difficult or challenging the problems may be, but with a commitment that we can solve it. And I want to say, "Talk to me, I'm listening." That's the first step.
Our seventh round will most likely be our last unless the candidates just have nothing to say about it. Donna Whitley will answer first, and Ryan will ask the question.
First question, I guess, what is your understanding of sort of your primary role as mayor? Would be kind of an advocate, sort of build consensus amongst different groups of people, managed people? I guess, how do you view the role as mayor where you should get this spot?
One of the primary responsibilities of mayor is being a, a bridge builder, of bringing people together to, to work together. And that's what my whole life has been about. I have a lot of experience bringing people to the table and working on challenging issues. I've done that with the Public Transportation Commission. And I will tell you, this is, this is a story, I haven't get it in. Percy Cox just died. He was the mayor of Greenville. When we were trying to get a bus system, we had no buses. And we couldn't get the people to move on it. They said, "We did that in nineteen forty-five and it didn't work." You know, this is nineteen seventy-seven. So, Percy Cox comes in one night, and he says, "I want you to get this bus going. I want you to pass the ordinance to get this bus going." He said, "When I graduated from the training that I had to be a mechanic, all I had was my tools. I had no money, no car, and I would not be the successful businessperson I am today if it had been for this bus system." And people got it, you know? They said, "Wow, we really do need, this is good for everybody. It'll bring jobs." So, this is the kind of, of interaction I want to see, that we bring people together. And, and a really interesting issue to me, one of the reasons I'm running, is people do not yet see the connection between quality of life, the things like recreation and culture and parks and trees, which we used to think were just extras. But, now redevelopment, economic redevelopment, people will tell you, highly, high-quality industry do consider these necessities, and they expect them to be in place when they come. So, these are the two things that I would work on, bringing people together to work, working on bringing quality of life. I'll tell you another story if I've got time. How much time?
One minute.
Okay. Do you know Elm Street Park? Elm Street Park is an amazing example of economic development and quality of life go hand in hand and cannot be separated. When Mr. Tav and Mr. Blunt bought those three farms in nineteen fifty, and they got Mr. Rivers to build essentially only planned textbook classic planned city, where they built four lanes of track, median down the middle, trees, sidewalks on both sides, churches, Elm Street Park, schools, and the, all the residences nestled in them. I went there this, this summer, and Little League team had two tournaments, and they bought in over two weeks, over a half a million dollars of income into the city from all these Little League people coming. And they've been doing that from nineteen, since nineteen fifty-one. So, economic development and quality of life do go hand in hand. They cannot be separated.
The mayor of all cities are always his chief executive officer. His or her job is to be the speaker for that particular city, to inspire, motivate, bring together, lead, and also to, you know, to, to speak highly of the place that he or she has mayorship over. And that's in accordance with the city councils. Most of the cities, major cities like this, are ran by city councils. They are the legislative body of the city. Now, my, if you elect me as mayor, I'm, listen, there's nobody in this race that I believe that loved the city of Greenville more than me. When I, when I entered the army, everywhere I went, people say, "Why do you love Greenville so much?" They say, "I told them, 'Because we have a great city.'" And I want everybody to know that if, for some reason or another, I died, send my body back to Greenville. Everybody knew that about me. There's nobody that loved the people of Greenville more than me. I go to Walmart every day, almost all of them, because I love the people. I talk to anyone, no matter what. Because it was so difficult for me trying to get my first degree and trying to apply for a national scholarship, which I won, it took me nine years to win it. I love education, so I'm always trying to inspire people about education. I'm always telling people about the city of Greenville. I'm telling them about the legislative process because I had an opportunity to meet U.S. Senator East, and I had opportunity to work at the White House, and I had opportunity to be in the same space as Mr. Bush and Colin Powell and Condoleezza Rice, and had opportunity to be the personal military liaison officer for Ambassador Burma, where I was, when it's plain land, I'm, I'm the one that met him. I'm the one with the police detail. I'm the one that took him to see the Secretary of the Defense. I'm the one that took him to see the President because the legislative process worked. So, as a mayor, I'm one that will inspire, motivate the citizens to get involved with the legislative process. It's we, the people, that if we elect officials, if you could, or any young person here can be Senator, they can be a United States Senator, they can run for the United States like me, they can be the President of the United States, as Barack Obama has proven you can do. They can, the young ladies can break the glass ceiling, and they can do great things like we have some candidates right now. But, inspire, motivate, lead, you know, promote economic development, which you must have jobs, okay? You've got to do things that's good for students, you've got to do it for the people. And main thing is, I'm the biggest cheerleader that Greenville ever seen. I love my city. Now, I may sit here and tell you what I think we need to do, and I'm not, I mean, you might think I'm overly critical, I'm just saying, we can do better. But, I still love our city, and I'll take Greenville hands down over any other city in the nation. And I've lived a lot of places. Thank you.
Ninety-second rebuttal?
Yes. Elm, Elm Street Park also has been an economic engine for sixty years because it has supported the property values in the area. People want to live in Brook Green, in Forest Hills, in Inglewood, and Elmhurst. And so, you've got, that's great for the city. We're getting, I just paid my taxes, I know. That's, they get a good tax amount from those neighborhoods. You've got all of your real estate people who are making money off of it because the neighborhoods, when a house comes up, they, they get, they sell quickly. And then all of the people who have the electricians and carpenters and people who are buying drapes and furniture. So, that's, I'm just saying, this is a quality of life, this little park with the Little League Park and the tennis courts, and, and all of this has generated for sixty years, not just a quality of life, but a tremendous amount of money for our city. So, that's an example of where they both go hand in hand. And I, I was going to the park when I, when I was a little kid on my bike, and I just rode to the park last week on my bike.
Ninety seconds?
And so, somebody told me last week, said, "Why are you running for mayor? You know, all they do is sign paperwork." Well, I said, "Good." I was an adjutant at the Pentagon, I was an adjutant in college. I used to sign probably five or six hundred documents when I worked on recruiting duty, you've got to sign so many paperwork. So, you know, I love paperwork. I consider myself as a paperwork guy, I love it. So, if, I told the person, "If that, if that, if you think that's, that's what the mayor does, great." So, for me, you know, I love paperwork, I love people, I love the legislative process. I'm one that I'll talk to anybody, help anybody, and if you elect me as mayor, I make a promise to you, if, if, if what I say doesn't work, then you can call me to the car, and, and you can do that.
Well, that completes the question and answer portion of our debate, and it's time for closing statements. As determined by a coin flip earlier, Ernest Reeves will begin. You have three minutes.
Yes. My name is Ernest T. Reeves, and I'm running for mayor of Greenville, North Carolina to improve the quality of life for all residents, especially the sick, the poor, the needy, and people that are homeless. So, if you elect me, I'll make a promise to you, I'll do my best to bring people to the table and to try to get laws passed and ordinances that will help the people. I believe in fiscal accountability, and I promise you that if you want to see the books, I'll let you see the books. And I'll be the biggest cheerleader for the city of Greenville, and I'm a no, no-nod cent person. If you ask me a question, I'll give you a straight answer. If I don't know it, I tell you I don't know it. And like I say, I'll do what I can to bridge the gap between the rich and the poor. I do what I can to bring help for the poor and the needy and the elderly. I'll do what I can to work with the city council and the police department and all these other neighborhoods. I've done it before in Flint. When I took command, I went there and I told the people, "Listen, I understand we've got crime here, my recruiters are here." And I go out to my seventy-seven high schools, and I told them, you know, "Let the kids be, let them graduate, let's work together. We'll, we'll respect you, you respect us. I'll do the same thing in this community that try to talk to where the crime-ridden areas, I'll go to them, I'll talk to the people. I ask for more police community, uh, community policing. We'll work together, you know, we'll make our city, hopefully, one of the ten safest cities in North Carolina." I will work to try to bring another shelter across the river, and I'll try to go to these businesses with the approval of the city council, ask them to do more economic development across north of the river. I have a great background. I spent while in the army, I spent three and a half years at Sea-Tac International Airport, a nominative assignment by the army. I know airport operations. I will work with any of the communities that need help in trying to bridge the gap between the airport and Noah's Abatement. I, I know aircraft, I know fuel, I know the process, because I've been through one of the best management schools in the nation with United Airlines. And so, I'm willing to work with anybody and all the people, the rich, the poor, the people that don't, that feel disenfranchised, the people that feel like they're not disenfranchised, like, because I have a love for older people. So, I'll work with the people that, right now in the city of Greenville, we've got people that feel like they don't know what's going on because of new technology. Well, I'm a technology guy, well, I used to be. I'll be able to bring them together, I'll be able to foster economic development, I'll go out, you know, and try to, even companies that say they don't want to come like Costco. We'll go back to them and say, "Hey, we've got one of the greatest cities in the nation, please reconsider." Even though we don't meet the numbers requirement, please reconsider. I'll do that.
And our final closing statement, Donna Whitley, three minutes.
My name is Donna Whitley. I was born here and raised here, and I intend to stay here forever. I'm running for mayor because economic development and quality of life go hand in hand. There are two sides of the same corn. Having a job so you can take care of your family is the most important economic development and quality of life issue. So, how is Greenville going to attract high-quality industry to come here with good jobs? First, we have to have infrastructure. We've been working on that for years, and we're doing great, and we're very, very competitive. However, when it gets down to the final decision between two cities with equal infrastructure, it's quality of life issues that break the tie. Quality of life is the tiebreaker, and I will work so that Greenville, North Carolina is the tiebreaker. So, what is this thing called quality of life? Well, companies will come in and they look at traffic. Does the traffic flow? Are people trapped in traffic jams? Are neighborhoods free of crime? Can children walk on a sidewalk safely to go visit a friend? These are powerful economic magnets that attract high-quality companies. There are other things like recreation and cultural activities, music, art, theater, parks and trees, and medical facilities and education for a diverse population. John Day, who is a commercial real estate developer, spoke recently to the city council in favor of Greenways because he knows they attract business. Unfortunately, Mayor Alan Thomas thinks that quality of life are wants or desires somewhat frivolous, but the point is, they are necessary, expected, and demanded by high-quality industry who wants to come to Greenville. That is why I'm running, because we must be sure that we- That is why I'm running, because we must be sure that we are advancing economic development and quality of life together. So the question is, you have a right to live in a place that's both a booming economy and a beautiful city that's creating livability. So if you want to be a part of whether, what this city looks like in 10, 20, or 50 years, do you want it to be a booming economy and a beautiful one? Of course you do, then you should vote for Donna Whitley on November the 3rd.
Well, Donna Whitley, Ernest Reeves, I thank you both for sharing your ideas, for your decorum, and most of all, for your participation. You've done a great service to the voters of the city today, and you have our sincere thanks. Questioners, fantastic job. Ryan Clancy, editor-in-chief of the East Carolinian, and Don Cavallini of the Pitt County Coalition Against Racism. In closing, The Greenville Guardian sincerely thanks our subscribing readers for making this event possible. Akela Thigpen at Vision on Film for her expert videography services at a generously discounted rate, the City of Greenville staff for their coordination, patience, and hard work, and Steve Johnson at the Minority Voice Newspaper, and Jake Postma of GPAT TV for their help and coordination. Remember, you can watch rebroadcasts of this debate beginning next Friday, September 25th, and full versions of all debates in this series will air throughout the election campaign at GPAT TV, Channel 23. Check their website, GPATTV.org for scheduling, and be sure to visit GreenvilleGuardian.org for information, continuing coverage right through the election day, and to support our nonprofit work in the public interest. I'm Lisa Ellison, co-founder and editor of The Greenville Guardian, thanking everyone here at City Hall and those watching at home for joining us.